Welcome, everyone. My name's Christine, councillor Christine O'Laurs. I'm the Darabben Mayor and the chairperson of tonight's meeting. It's my pleasure to welcome you all along to tonight's planning committee meeting. I declare this meeting open at 6:29. We're a minute early. Okay, 6:30 on her clock. Thank you. I probably would like to... We are being livestreamed this evening. A recording will be available on the council's website as soon as possible after the meeting. I would like to start by acknowledging the Runtrurong people, the traditional owners of this land. I recognise their enduring connection to land, water and culture, and pay my respects to elders past and present. And we have just had NADOC Week, the 50th NADOC Week in this last week, so I hope everyone was able to get out to some of the celebrations. I'm not sure if people... Anne Howard is here with us. She's our new CEO. So this will be Anne's first planning meeting, so welcome, Anne. I'd also like to welcome all of the councillors, the senior staff, and the senior staff who are joining us here this evening. We do have an apology from councillor Bogliss. Councillor Bogliss is on approved leave of absence at the moment. And I believe councillor Sangster will be joining us, but she's joining us online, so she's not yet in the meeting at the moment. I will start with disclosures of conflicts of interest. So if any councillors or relevant staff have a conflict of interest relating to a matter on tonight's agenda, please disclose that conflict of interest and the nature of that conflict. And I also need to remind you that if, through the meeting, if something comes up that you realise at that point that you've got a conflict, that you also need to then declare it and make sure that we're aware. So just asking councillors and officers, are there any conflicts of interest to declare this evening? Nope, that's nothing, okay. First up, we just need to confirm the minutes of the previous planning meeting. So this one was on the 12th of May 2025. So could I please have a councillor... Please have a mover of the adoption of the minutes of the planning committee for that date? Is anyone...? Thank you councillor Selkos. Do I have a second, Anne? Councillor O'Brien. And I'll put the motion to the vote. So all those in favour, please raise your hand. Great, and that's carried unanimously. So thank you very much. I should also... Oh, we've got councillor Sangster here, so welcome councillor Sangster. I was just about to say I've got even numbers, now we don't, so excellent. In relation to council's health and safety responsibilities, I just need to run through those briefly. So we do have an OHNS responsibility to ensure that anyone attending tonight's meeting in person or online is both physically and emotionally safe. So fabulous to see people here tonight in the chamber, and I'm sure following online as well. Just really need to remind people to be respectful of one another. And this is outlined... There's a range of ways this is outlined in our governance rules. Certainly, any councillor or other person who's addressing the meeting really needs to do so in a courteous and respectful manner, and needs to take direction from the chairperson whenever called on to do so. We ask you to keep quiet through the council meeting, except when you're presenting. So to keep comments to yourself, unless you're at the microphone. Please don't utter any offensive, indecent or objectional items or words, or be offensive in any way. And if any conduct is considered improper or disorderly, I may direct that person to cease their conduct, and you must at that point comply when you've been asked to do that. So, thank you. All right. So councillors, I'll be permitting questions of officers prior to the commencement of the debate on each item. There are just two items on the agenda this evening. But before we get going, can I just request also that you keep your microphones off, unless you're speaking, councillors? So the first report is item 5.1, which is the development plan for approval, and it's for 150 Atherton Road, Northkirk. So first up, officers will present to the committee a brief presentation on this item. So are we going ahead with that?
Yeah. Thank you, madam. Good evening councillors and members of the gallery. So the matter being considered tonight concerns a proposal for the approval of a development plan application at 150 Atherton Road, Northkirk. The subject site is currently occupied by a multi-level self-storage building and has a site area of approximately 5,000 square metres, with several industrial buildings of a similar scale adjoining the site. The surrounding area has a mixed character, with industrial, commercial, public open space and residential uses all present nearby. The Merrick Creek Corridor is located west of the site, and the St George's Road Corridor is located to the east of the site. In terms of planning controls, the subject site is Zone Commercial 1 and is affected by the Development Plan Overlay Schedule 12, the Environmental Audit Overlay and the Development Contributions Plan Overlay. The DPO 12 was introduced into the Darabben Planning Scheme with council support through a planning scheme amendment in May 2015, and the DPO 12 seeks to facilitate the redevelopment of the wider industrial precinct into a residential and commercial mixed-use precinct. A development plan application is used as a master plan for an area and facilitates a planned and orderly redevelopment ahead of any future planning permits. Under the planning scheme, council must generally approve a development plan before a planning permit is approved. The DPO 12 applies to much of the land located immediately east of the Merrick Creek, between Atherton Road and Beavers Road, and to the west of Woolhouse Street and Leinster Grove. This DPO area is split into two sub-precincts, being the northern precinct along Beavers Road, which has been mostly redeveloped to date, and this larger southern precinct along Atherton Road, where this proposal is the first significant mixed-use application lodged with council. The development plan under consideration tonight proposes the following as part of the future redevelopment of the site: the construction of a part-six and part-seven storey mixed-use building; a proposed yield of approximately 135 new dwellings in a mixture of one-, two- and three-bedroom typologies; a voluntary affordable housing contribution as part of the dwelling mix in support of the increased heights proposed, which represents 4% to 5% of the total dwelling provision; 700 square metres of new commercial and community floor area; the provision of up to 225 car parking spaces on-site for residents, visitors and the commercial uses; new pedestrian and cycling links through the site, and a new publicly accessible pocket park. This application was informally exhibited with 239 letters sent to nearby owners and occupiers, and advertising signs placed on the land for two weeks. Notices informal for development plan applications due to the planning scheme amendment that predates this application and the consultation contained therein. Forty-three submissions were received in response to the exhibition of the application on the key grounds of height, car parking concerns, traffic impact concerns, and the number of proposed dwellings. It is noted that the DPO 12 contemplates discretionary height limits of four to six stories and that this development plan seeks to exceed this by one additional story in the centre of the site. It's also important to note the willingness of the applicant to work with council officers over the course of the assessment of this application since 2022 to resolve concerns with the proposal. These negotiations with the applicant have resulted in amendments to the development plan, with the overall proposed height reduced from nine stories to the maximum seven stories before council tonight. The proposal is generally compliant with the relevant policies and provisions of the Darabben Planning Scheme and provides a well-resolved response to the requirements of the DPO 12. While it does seek some variations, in particular in relation to maximum height, it provides a clear net community benefit in support of this variation through the provision of 135 new dwellings in this well-located and serviced area, the creation of new public paths and a park, improvements to Atherton Road, a voluntary affordable housing contribution and a high-quality building design. Accordingly, it is recommended to support the proposal and approve the development plan subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, do you have any questions of officers regarding this particular item? No questions? Okay, well, we have seven submitters this evening who would like to put forward their submission. So we will start off... You have... I'll call out your name when it's your turn. You have three minutes to speak. So when I call your name, please approach the lectern and turn on the microphone. Just a little button you'll see on the top of it. And you can then address the committee. There is a clock that will be going up on the screen, so you'll be able to check. And I will need to pull you in if you get into the three minutes, so please don't think I'm rude if I do that. But first up, we have David Workman. So David, can you please come and speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councillors and council staff. My name is David Workman. I'm the Director of Urban and Community Planning at EG Funds Management, being the proponent for the development plan. By way of background, EG invests industry and related superannuation funds in select urban renewal projects within Melbourne and other cities in Australia. In short, we have read the council officer report and are in support of the recommendation, although we do acknowledge and accept the condition to be imposed, requiring amendment to the plan to include a Section 173 agreement ensuring public access within the proposed open space and pathways that will traverse the site. We have worked closely with council now for several years, and we are very grateful the development plan is nearing finalisation, which will enable preparation and lodgment of a planning permit application for council and the community's future consideration. We've always sought to work in a collaborative manner with the Rabbin and note that following discussions with council over the last 18 months or so, the density of the development plan has been reduced, including height reductions of two stories, a building layout redesign to improve residential amenity, and other modifications ensuring it respects neighbouring property. Since the wider precinct was rezoned in 2015 to allow mixed-use residential, there's been no such renewal in the southern part of the precinct. This plan hopefully will instigate transition from what is currently an older industrial precinct in terms of its look and feel to a residential one, providing much improved compatibility with the surrounding residential context. As noted in the council report, the plan will ensure a net community benefit, equitable development outcomes, and facilitate a high-quality residential renewal via generous setbacks, open space, pocket parks and pedestrian laneways comprising 24% of the site area; an affordable housing contribution, dedicated community space, new tree plantings, high-quality architectural design and streetscape improvement along Atherton Road, including increased building setbacks and upgraded bus stop landscaping and street tree plantings. I and our lead planner from Mecon, who's here tonight with me, are available to answer any questions should they arise. Thank you again, Madam Mayor, for the opportunity to address council on this matter.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ruben Winograd. Ruben, you've got three minutes. Press the button if the green light's not already on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councillors and council staff. My name is Ruben Winograd, Director at Mecon. We've been engaged by EG Funds to prepare the development plan at 150 Atherton Road, Northkirk. Firstly, we'd like to thank the planning department and their collaborative approach in reaching this outcome. As was explained in the brief, this has been going on for a few years, and it's good to finally reach this point. Secondly, we've reviewed the report prepared by the planning department and agree with the recommendation and appreciate the thorough description and accurate description that was presented. For a mini-urban renewal precinct, a compliant development plan should be essentially compliant with the main planning mechanism which requires it, which is the development plan, and really should have consideration for the immediate area providing net community benefit. The site and the wider precinct have high site coverage, low levels of permeability or of poor design, have poor pedestrian and bicycle connectivity. The site currently has a two-and-a-half-storey open facade with car parking abutting Atherton Road, has no activation, no connections to the creek, or immediate area and poor pedestrian experience in Atherton Road. The officer's report effectively explains the high level of compliance of this development plan with the requirements of the overlay and the specifics expected of the southern precinct. Due to its high compliance, the proposal achieves the development outcomes and overall precinct benefits. The development plan represents the first instigator of change in the southern precinct, and from a precinct perspective, the development plan will provide a new north-south pedestrian path connecting Atherton Road to the remainder of the site and essentially to Beavers Road to the north; a new east-west path along the northern boundary, which will connect the site to Woolhouse Street and future connections to the Merrick Creek; provide a setback to Atherton Road and in doing so, improve the width of the footpath, pedestrian access, bus stop for safety and visibility, passive surveillance, landscaping and an active frontage; provide high levels of permeability. The proposal essentially converts a site with a site coverage of 100% down to 75%, and this ensures pocket parks, accessible pathways, landscaping, public lighting and furniture; concealed car parking and an active frontage as opposed to the current undercroft parking which abuts Atherton Road; and generous setbacks to allow for future development of neighbouring sites. The development plan is a well-thought-out and well-designed master plan that represents the first stage of the planning process. We request the council supports this proposal and look forward to the next stage of the process. Thank you.
Thanks, Ruben. The next speaker is Lauren Manning.
Hello, everyone. Please ignore my clunky laptop here. And this is my first meeting as well, so we can be having our first council meetings together. So I'm speaking on behalf of the wider community within Atherton Road and beyond. And I want you to understand that we're not here to object against this in its entirety. We understand that we need more housing in Northkirk and in Darabben. Our main concern is around the strain on the current infrastructure. I've noticed from the three men that have spoken tonight, no one has mentioned the impact on the traffic infrastructure at the moment, and this is our biggest concern. So 150 Atherton Road, the data used to determine the number of cars per dwelling was based on a 2021 census. Now, there is a census happening next year, and I think you'll all remember. In 2021, this was during COVID. There weren't many cars on the road, there weren't many of us driving. So we recommend that this data be revised with accurate data from the 2026 census next year. Atherton Road is only one of three major arterial roads running east to west and then in the north alongside Normanby Road and Bell Street. There's only a single lane each way. So our question is to the developers and to the proposal, how will we handle this additional traffic of these new vehicles coming in? There's a mention of a left turn in and out of the car park. How will this be enforced? And what happens to the cars coming from St George's Road on the east? The traffic assessment that was done, the impact assessment, was conducted on the 23rd of June, oh sorry, in June 2023. The council's traffic engineers reviewed the findings and determined it to be reasonable, but we see things differently. The assessment was prior to the residents of 198 Beavers Road moving in. So that's 74 dwellings, and based on the calculus... Sorry, the 2021 census calculations, that's an extra, say, 115 to 120 cars on the road that weren't included in this assessment. And based on personal assessment, I live on Atherton Road. And when I try and reverse out of the driveway, there is often peak traffic. As any of you would know, being locals, there is a lot of traffic in that area and is quite often backed up at peak times. And we are worried that having more cars on the road will make it less enjoyable for current residents and for the future residents moving into 150 Atherton Road. Oh my God, I'm running out of time. We also note that there was a Sumner Estate traffic concerns petition raised in a council meeting last month, where they raised similar concerns as us around traffic safety and around the cars coming from 150 Atherton Road. Another point of concern for us is the bulk and the height, and I know that some of us will be speaking about this later. But the closest seven-storey building is on 470 High Street, and the nearby development of East Brunswick Village is only five to six stories.
I need you to wind up, sorry.
That's fine. I'm sure that more people will say what I want to say later. Thanks, everyone, for listening.
Thank you. Okay, we have online, I believe, David Meagan. Hi, David.
Hi.
You've got three minutes to speak. Welcome to the meeting.
Thanks so much, councillors and gallery members. And apologies, we were not able to make it in person, but we are here remotely. We are also residents... My name's David Meagan, and I'm also a resident of Atherton Road. And just to echo Lauren's point, absolutely, we do support the idea of further increasing the residential space in the area, but we feel there's a couple of points that we would like to outline. We feel the consultation process lacked adequate time for response. This report that we got today indicates a thorough consultation process with the community, but we feel like this was not sufficient. For example, in the report, it's listed that substantial notification and community engagement was undertaken prior to the lodgment of this application. And this occurred during the planning scheme amendment process in 2013. We believe the majority of current local residents would not be aware of this application. The invitation for tonight's committee meeting was dated July 2, but we only received it last Tuesday, giving us three days to read the 100-page document and come up with our own response, our own verbal response. Now, we understand there's a delay with the post, but we did receive confirmation by email from our previous feedback and objections. And we do wonder why this wasn't used as a method for correspondence to quicken that process. We were given an opportunity to respond in March. Any of the ejections that we made were deemed irrelevant in this report. For example, comments about overshouting were believed unreasonable. We commented on the bulk of the proposal, but was not listed in the recent report. Speaking of the bulk, any of the planning scheme amendments for C127 gave permission to develop buildings with a maximum of four stories. In the area, there is currently no order seven-storey development in approximately 500 metres of the site. We believe seven stories is excessive, particularly built so close to the road. We'd prefer to see a development that has a further setback up the top stories of, say, three metres per story. And just to echo again what Lauren mentioned about the traffic, this was undertaken in June 2023, and it indicated that this development will not have any significant impact on the traffic of Atherton Road. However, that timing, as Lauren mentioned, was closer to the COVID, when less people will be using the road. It also was undertaken on Atherton Road and Winifred Street. We believe the surveying Woolhouse Street would have been a better reflection of the traffic congestion. That's it. Kind of rushed the last couple of points. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, and thanks for making your time to come along this evening. We've got Lucy Ford next. Thank you, Lucy. You've got three minutes.
Hi, everybody. I'm Lucy. So I live pretty much a stone's throw away from this development. Another person who's not opposed to property development. I've got three adult children still living at home who can't afford to buy a house, so I'd love them to be able to buy one of these properties one of these days. However, I do have, as do my family, a few concerns which have already been raised. But the first thing I want to mention is the height. So I had a look actually at the Darabben Housing Strategy July 2024, and I thought it was a pretty cool strategy. I like the look of it. But this doesn't comply with it. It doesn't align. There's so many things, but the main one being that, I mean, it's residential. There's houses everywhere around it. And it looks to me in the strategy that it's three to five stories, and whereas the proposal for this is seven. I really oppose it. I think that it's going to really impact the beautiful aesthetics that we have in our lovely neighbourhood of Northkirk. I've lived in Northkirk for 35 years, been a ratepayer for 30. Really, really concerned that a seven-storey development is going upright in the middle of where we live. And it's been mentioned the traffic. So I pull out of my car park, goes out onto Winifred Street. I turn right every morning down Atherton Road to go to work. It can take me 10 minutes to turn right. The traffic at times when I'm coming home from work is deadlocked from St George's Road right up to Nicholson Street, not moving. So there's massive traffic congestion. And this development is going to make it so much worse. And people are taking shortcuts through Winifred, through our street, and particularly, you know, during school drop-off pickup with Northkirk High, et cetera. And it is just getting worse and worse all the time. So I'm really concerned about people cutting through car parks. A full, all-along Winifred now, and that's never been the case. So yeah, I'm also really concerned about car parking. Just quickly as well, in terms of affordable housing, 5% is not enough. I'm a social worker. We all know what the disadvantage, particularly in Darabben, of people who are escaping family violence and all kinds of housing issues. 5% is not enough affordable housing. So I'd really, really like to see that bumped up to at least 10. Thank you very much. Nice to see everybody.
Thank you. Okay, and the final submitter is Alison Spencer.
There's always one, and I'm it. And I'm here to show you pictures. And unfortunately, I don't have it on the screen. I thought this was going to be a much closer thing. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask this gentleman here to show the decision-makers. I guess it's the people round the table. Darling, you'll have to walk. It's not big enough. But walk, just show. Can we see? Now, what you're looking at is what I look at when I look out my window. And that big thing with the yellow... And that big thing with the yellow columns is what we're talking about. And what does it do? It looks right in my house. And when the man comes around, quick, 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 our time's going. Everyone can have a look, show these ones. Can you see the building? So, they're from the two bedrooms. And I'll show you my floor plan, and you can see how it also looks straight in my living room. Now, if we know about line of sight, if I can see them, they can see me. You can see I've got a large fence, but still, those buildings, thank you darling, are quite visible. Any questions before I go on? No. What I'd like to do now is I'm going to do more of a photo. This is the floor plan of my house. I've been very lucky, I've been a beneficiary of rezoning and various things. Where I live used to be the MMBW disposal works. So, my address is Zoe Circuit, but I'm on a small block of land. And I back onto Artherton Road and Winifred Street. And so, the person who designed my house was very clever and gave me windows only on two sides, so I don't have to be concerned about the neighbours. And those two sides are north and east. And what's right opposite me, north and east? The building we're discussing. So, I don't know, sir, if you can show this around, you're seeing yellow. They're the windows in my house, sorry. Every window except the laundry that I look out of looks at them and they will look at me. I'm very concerned that the building as is goes forward from the other buildings. If we look at these photos again, you'll see that it doesn't line up with the car wash. It doesn't line up with kitchens next door, and it doesn't line up with the new factories. It comes out further. The building also, you can see it has columns, and straight above it, it goes right up. And you can see all the white. And that's what they're saying, we're going to keep that front, and when we go up, we're going to go step back further. Well, I would like them to step back further sooner, so they're not looking in my house. I understand that these buildings look straight down Winifred Street, and they're million-dollar views. You're not going to get a view like that in many other places of Melbourne, straight to the city. I'm very pleased that apparently good architects are involved, but I would really like to be considered and not spend my life being concerned about people looking in my house. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have actually missed someone, so Nico Altenberg, are you here? Yeah, sorry, Nico, you've got three minutes.
Hi, everyone. Our initial concern is that the proposed building feels too overbearing along Artherton Road and appears inconsistent with the barred guidelines, which emphasise creating a strong sense of place and vibrancy of commercial and mixed uses, accessibility and community safety. This is especially relevant to the Artherton Road frontage, which is heavily used by pedestrians and cyclists. We are particularly concerned that the tall facade and overhanging balconies will block natural light from reaching the southern-facing footpaths and roadway, which will create a less-than-welcoming public space, effectively undermining the strong sense of place that guidelines aim to promote. It would also lead to increased noise levels due to sound reverberation. A practical solution would be to set the upper levels of the building further back from Artherton Road, reducing the visual bulk and enhancing amenity for the community over the long term. Secondly, we believe that unless the traffic management is carefully designed, this development could introduce significant problems. A more accurate and relevant traffic assessment, as others have mentioned, is needed, ideally conducted during peak weekend periods in twenty twenty-five, rather than relying on data from weekdays in twenty twenty-three. Local residents are well aware of the persistent issue of speeding vehicles along the section of Artherton Road, which is not adequately reflected in the proposal. We'd also like reassurance that the proposed left-in, left-out vehicle access will be implemented in a way that actively enforces the restriction, not merely through signage, which is often disregarded. Yeah, we obviously support appropriate development that will enhance Artherton Road community, but this proposal needs further refinement to align with the spirit and intent of the barred guidelines, particularly along Artherton Road. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you actually to all of the submitters this evening, we appreciate your time. We're going to now move to the debate. So, councillors, do we have a motion to go forward?
Could we possibly ask a couple of questions before we go to the debate, is that okay?
We can.
Thank you, and through you, Mayor, can I just ask of officers, what data was used to collate the car parking requirements? Was that based on the car ownership data or the mode of travel that people used on the day of the last census? Or something else?
Thank you for the question, councillor, through you, Mayor. The data used to inform the report and the application was the census data for car ownership rates at the time.
And just another question if I can, thank you, Mayor. And can you please explain for us what the community consultation process was for this development plan?
Thank you for the question, through you, Mayor. So, for the development plan, exhibition of a development plan is informal due to the planning scheme amendment that predates the overlay going into the planning scheme, which itself has significant community consultation. For this application, two hundred and thirty-nine letters were sent to surrounding property owners and two advertising signs were placed on the site for fourteen days. That's consistent with the approach we would take in the planning department for planning permit applications. The difference here being, as it's an informal exhibition, we receive submissions rather than objections that would give appeal rights. Thank you.
Other questions? Yep.
Thank you. Given we've heard a bit about the height limits and the visual bulk, could officers describe a little bit about the reduction that was in the negotiation from nine to seven, as we've now got in front of us? Thank you.
Sure, thank you for the question, through you, Mayor. This application was lodged with council in twenty twenty-two and proposed a height of a maximum of nine stories. We've heard mention of the barred guidelines this evening, the planning controls affecting the site reference those guidelines. And for this area of the precinct, it seeks a discretionary height, so not an enforced maximum, a discretionary height of four to six stories. Officers have been in negotiation for much of the application process since twenty twenty-two with the applicant in good faith. That has resulted in the height reducing from the maximum of nine stories originally received to the part-six and part-seven storey height that we, that has been considered by council tonight. Those negotiations have taken place over quite some time and involve other considerations or concessions, I suppose you could say, from the applicant to council in the development plan to realise a net community benefit in support of that increase in height over the discretionary limit. Some of those elements that I discussed in my intro were other voluntary affordable housing contribution, pocket park within the site, links through the site for pedestrians and cyclists. And that's probably the main ones to mention, thank you.
Any further questions, councillors? Okay, so we will move to the debate now, so do we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I've got an amended officer's recommendation to move, which is coming up on the screen now.
So, it's not an amendment if you're putting it forward at this point, is it?
It's, yeah, so it's, this is the motion that I'd like to move.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to check the wording, so I'll just sit down while I have a read.
So, you're happy with, is that the wording you wanted, councillor Jolly?
Just in the, there's a little slight change that I wanted to make. In the sentence beginning the car parking survey, they should read the transport, just the survey, sorry. Delete the words car parking.
So, the survey must review transport and car parking impacts?
Yes, that's what I intended.
Yep. Have we got that? It's coming. And car parking impacts incidences?
Yeah, just the word impacts rather than incidences, if we can delete the word incidences in the second last line. Yep.
Is that right now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second for this motion, councillor O'Brien?
Mayor, I'm not sure at this point it's appropriate, can I ask a question in relation to the, what the intention is, if that's okay?
Yes.
The wording, probably to officers rather than councillor Jolly.
Question to the officers.
Is the reference to transport, is the intention of the word transport to include all types of transport, including road traffic, cycling, pedestrians, et cetera?
Thank you for the question through the mayor. Yes, it is meant to be taken in an expansive term.
Okay, so, so does the mover wish to speak?
Yes, I will, thank you, Mayor. So, in moving this motion for the approval of the proposed development plan, I believe that this plan represents an opportunity to support the provision of more housing here in Darabin, while also ensuring that our communities remain livable, accessible and well-serviced. I do note that this does not come, that there will be some impact, obviously felt by the neighbours, as we've heard here this evening. But as officers noted in their introduction, the proposed development complies with the commercial use for which the land has been zoned. And this is a strong guiding point for this decision. As we know, development must be done responsibly, and that's why I've moved this particular change, which requires that under section four point four of the development plan, that to include a requirement for a transport and car parking survey to be conducted both prior and after the occupancy of the proposed development. This is to ensure that, so the survey will be undertaken by council and funded by the owner to assess the transport and car parking impacts on nearby residential streets. And importantly, this will identify any mitigation measures to address any exacerbation issues that may arise from the development and the increased residencies in this particular vicinity. This is really about ensuring that we are not just building infrastructure, but also building communities that work for residents, for businesses and also for the environment. This allows us to be proactive in managing the pressures that come with increased density in response to some of the concerns that have been raised here this evening by community members and through the submissions that have been made so far. I note that the plan includes positive improvements for pedestrians and active transport users with new north, south and east-west pathway connections in the area. This will strengthen walkability and cycling access throughout this area, which is currently quite lacking. And also goes towards supporting council's goals for increasing public transport and active transport usage, as noted in its transport strategy and climate emergency plan. By encouraging more sustainable modes of travel and improving connectivity between residential zones and commercial hubs and public transport links, this shows that this is a step forward in creating a more integrated and people-friendly urban environment. I particularly want to thank the officers for their diligent work in bringing this plan to us for consideration. And also want to thank them for the groundwork that they've laid in presenting us with this development that can be both progressive and responsible. Thank you, I commend the motion to you all.
Thank you, does the second wish to speak?
Briefly, Mayor, thank you. So, yeah, I would just like to thank everybody that's joined us here in the chamber tonight and online to express their views. Obviously, some of these, what we were aware of in terms of the submissions received prior to being in the chamber tonight, so the traffic and parking impacts and the visual impact of the building certainly stood out as concerns for a number of people. I think I support this in terms of the context of what's been presented to us tonight. The fact that it was originally due to be nine and there's been a negotiated position achieved of a setback of a lower level, sort of the lower levels being, you know, the bulk of the building, but levels six and seven are quite set back and reduced. And the additional things that have been achieved in terms of the access to the site and the amenity around the pocket park, I think, do stand it in good stead. We also are seeing high-quality build and environmental standards guaranteed through this and a bus stop upgrade, as was mentioned earlier. So, all that being said, certainly the traffic and car parking stuff that has been brought to our attention here tonight and previously by residents of the Sumner Estate, I think it was last month, brought that petition to us. We're aware that there are issues in the area already and that we do need to address those. But on balance, we do need to achieve more housing, so we just need to do it in a responsible way and understand what the transport impacts will be through the development. So, I think this amendment helps us achieve that by getting the survey of pre and post. And then as council, we're informed going forward about what those impacts may be and what we will can do to address them. So, I know this will be, I guess, something that doesn't sit well with everybody in the room and apologies for that. But we have to balance all of these things and it does meet the requirements of the zoning. So, the likelihood of it, if we were to deny it, it would likely be approved by VCAT anyway, and we wouldn't necessarily get these additional benefits that the staff have been able to negotiate. So, finally, yeah, just thank you to the staff for working hard to achieve that. And I think ultimately what will be there will be a much better building
To get you to wind up.
Better, sorry, much better access for everybody. Thank you.
Okay, do I have anyone who wants to speak against the motion? No, anyone else who'd like to speak? Councillor Aturi?
Thank you, Mayor. I won't repeat a lot of what's already been said, but I want to thank councillor Jolly for bringing this alternate officer's recommendation to the chamber. And I also want to thank all the submitters that have spoken tonight and who've written to council over the last, or through this process. And of course, our job here this evening is to balance all those, all that feedback and then to make a decision on balance. Of course, what we've heard this evening in terms of the concerns that are coming through from those submitters are concerns in relation to traffic, transport and parking, as well as other items. But that seems to me to be the main theme, as noted by the previous speakers. The amendment that has been, that's before us, goes some way to address that. Perhaps not immediately, but will provide us with data and information that council can use to make decisions for the benefit of that area to address some of those issues that have been raised with us this evening. Of course, a part of that balancing act is also to consider the benefits of this proposal. And of course, I want to also thank officers and indeed the proponent for their good faith discussions in arriving at this point. And what we see before us is, I think, a much better proposal than what was originally put by the proponents, I want to thank the parties involved for that. And that includes, of course, the height and the access to the creek and indeed through the site as well. So, I think that it does achieve the balance and I will be supporting this motion.
Okay, any further comment? Okay, any further comment? Nope. Okay, I don't think you need to write a reply. We haven't had any opposition, so, uh, I'm going to just put this to the vote now. Um, so all those in favour of, uh, the recommendation up on the screen at the moment, please raise your hand. That one's carried unanimously. Um, so thank you, everybody. Just to be clear, the planning committee has decided to vary the opposite of a rec- recommendation to approve the development plan application subject to the additional conditions on the screen. Um, the applicant can appeal the decision at VCAT. Um, that's, the decision is not at this point final. Um, but the process of appeal is subject to timeframes detailed on the documentation to be sent to the applicant. Okay, thank you. That's that one. So we now move to, uh, the other business of tonight's meeting, um, which is just really just general planning information. So it's the scheduled VCAT applications. You may feel free to leave if you want to. Thank you. Okay, so, um, uh, does anyone have any questions of officers in relation to this item? Okay, do I have a mover of the motion? Councillor O'Brien? Do I have a seconder? Councillor Arturi? Does anyone, uh, does the mover wish to speak to the motion?
No need, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, does the seconder wish to speak? No? I'm going to put it to the vote. Unless anyone else wants to speak, sorry. But, no, no, going to put it to the vote. All those in favour, raise your hand. Uh, and that's carried unanimously. Um, thank you for all your work on that report, um, to the staff. Uh, there's no confidential reports to be considered this evening, so I now will move to um, closing this meeting at, huh, seven nineteen PM. Um, thank you, everybody, and good night.